Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2021 Candidate Forum for Directors in the Isiqua School District. This event is presented by the Isiqua Cable TV Commission and the Isiqua Chapters of the Coanis Club and the American Association of University Women. I'm Anne Frances Owen, and I'll moderate this forum with Connie Fletcher. Over the next hour, we'll hear from the four candidates running for school board. Robin Poe and Marnie J. Moraldo are running for position two, while Wendy Giora and Sydney Mullings are running for position four. Each candidate will start with a two-minute statement and then respond to questions. Initial responses will last up to 90 seconds. Each candidate will hear a single chime when she has 20 seconds left and two chimes when no time remains. After the first candidate responds, her opposition will respond, and then the first candidate will have another 30 seconds for rebuttal. Again, two chimes will indicate when rebuttal time is over, and then we'll move on to the next question. Finally, each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. Before we start, I'd like to thank Anne Crabtree, Tina Blondino, Kathleen Friedman, Fred Butler, Jerry Tolstedt, Lindsay Pinkston, and Tim Smith for suggesting questions and otherwise helping us put this event together. From this point forward, we'll use only first names. And let's get started. Robin will give the first opening statement, followed by Marnie, Wendy, and Sydney.
Hello, I'm running for District Two in the Isiqua School District. And I looked at this as a way to contribute to the community. And as we've seen with all of this COVID restrictions that we've had over the past year, and they are finally going to be able to go back to school. And there, I understand that some of the students may have fallen a little behind because Zoom calls don't really work for them. And so I think in order to use the resources in the most effective way, I think that we would need to focus very, maybe more intently on your core classes like writing, reading, mathematics, science, and especially, and particularly those courses that are necessary to ensure that as they approach the job market, as they grow up, that they will have become effective and productive people in society and more happy and adjusted as well. Furthermore, I think that because they have been deprived of a lot of social life, which is very important for children's mental health, that there should, I think, be an increase in the, in the school schedule for more recess or outside physical activities. Very important for their physical health, as well as being able to associate, socialize with other children. And I think that can be done without detracting too much from the, the study courses within the day or within the schedule. And I think also that I think that since socialization has been a bit poor in the last year, that, that they learn maybe some emphasis on socializing with respect, courtesy, and friendship with the other students.
Thank you, Robin. Marnie, would you like to go?
Thank you. Thank you so much to the AAUW Coanis and the Isiqua Cable Commission for providing this time to share with the community our goals and why we're running for the school board and being able to share our visions. My name is Marnie Moraldo. I've been serving the Isiqua School Board since 2009, when my son was in fifth grade and my daughter was in first grade. Both my kids receive special services from the district, and they are the core of my mantra that all means all, and that's all all means. Over my time on the board, the district has made positive strides in addressing the needs of students who may come to our schools with more barriers to their learning. I'm especially excited about the district's current work moving towards including students with special accommodations in classrooms with their peers who do not need special services. Another area where I'm looking forward to the success is with the district's work to address the needs of students with dyslexia. But there is definitely more work to do in this area. Of course, given the past year and a half, I feel we need to move from looking at our students more broadly to looking at the needs of each and every student. The pandemic has been difficult, to say the least. Some students fared okay, and some even thrived while participating in remote learning. But we know that so many students have been impacted, impacted, have struggled, and have fallen behind. We need to spend the next several years helping students catch up and feel confident in their learning. The other area of focus for the board is the restoration of our relationships with the adults in the system, both our staff and our neighbors. It seems everything in our world is so divided, but our students are best served when we align ourselves to our collective goal, providing all students with a strong, effective education that will set them up to reach their full potential. My goal is to work towards rebuilding trust in our district. Thank you for your time, and I hope by the end of the evening you will feel more informed as you make your election decision.
Thank you. Wendy, would you like to start?
Okay. I love the Isiqua community. Board members here have many duties such as evaluating the superintendent, creating policies, and approving budgets. I'm well-qualified in all these areas. However, as a teacher and school principal for over 34 years with a doctorate in educational leadership, teaching young people and finding the key to their success is my passion. I am the only candidate with teaching and educational leadership experience. One of the reasons I'm running for school board is to ensure all students who got lost and fell behind during Zoom classes last year will be given the extra help needed to get caught up in all academic areas. I am your Back to the Basics candidate. Currently, there are plans at the state level to lower the goals and expectations in all academic classes, switch to a pass/fail grading system, and cut all the gifted classes. This year, parents are already asking me, why is my child not being given homework anymore? To achieve equity, school districts are considering lowering our academic standards, even though most studies have shown that disadvantaged students who take challenging courses perform well academically, graduate on time, are successful in college, and find great jobs. Transitioning these students into higher-quality, more rigorous curriculum provides a higher degree of student success in college than almost any other reform. According to a 2020 USA Today article, the U.S. ranks ninth in reading and 31st in math out of 79 countries tested. Parents move to Isiqua because of the excellence and quality of education they expect from our schools. I stand for keeping and even improving that quality, not diminishing it. I will fight to keep the quality and standards high in every classroom for every child. I ask for your vote, Dr. Wendy Giora for Isiqua School Board. Thank you.
And Sydney, would you like to speak?
I would. Thank you. Thanks so much for including me in tonight's forum. I'm sure this is going to be an awesome opportunity for the community to learn more about me, my background, and why the work of the Isiqua School Board is so important. I'm Sydney Mullings, and I've proudly served on the Isiqua School Board since 2019. I was appointed to a board vacancy following an extensive application and interview process. I was duly elected in November of that same year. I have an undergrad degree in international politics from Penn State University and a master's degree in human-computer interaction from DePaul University. I have a long history of nonprofit board experience focused on both eradicating homelessness in the city of Chicago and supporting local underserved youth here in the Puget Sound. I've worked in technology for over 20 years, and my family relocated to Isiqua in 2014. With two children currently in Isiqua schools, I am deeply committed to ensuring that all of our students have access to exceptional educational experiences. Throughout my time on the board, I've studied each topic and issue deeply, asked questions for understanding to help make what I believe were the right decisions to serve our students, staff, and community. The last two years have highlighted that a school board director must possess deeply analytical skills, be a strong collaborator, and able to listen for understanding across many different perspectives. I can say with certainty that I have the right skills, commitment, and resilience needed to serve this community as a member of the Isiqua School Board. We have much work to do to ensure that we keep our schools open safely, to identify and reverse any learning loss that our children have experienced in the last 18 months, and to repair the seams in our community as we rebound from this polarizing time. I bring both a balanced perspective and a drive for forward progress. It's been my honor to be a part of the Isiqua School Board, and I look forward to continuing my service.
Thank you all for introducing yourselves to our audience. Connie, please ask the first question.
Thanks very much, and good to see you all. The first question relates to policy governance model that is used by our Isiqua School District. How do superintendent, how does the superintendent's role and responsibilities differ from those of the school board? Wendy, you are the first to respond, followed by Sydney, and then Wendy for a 30-second rebuttal. Wendy, go ahead.
So, under policy governance, the school board is required to set the policy for the district in every area that concerns everything about the district. After they've set the policy, they turn it over to the superintendent, and it's his job to carry out that policy. As he does so throughout the year, he sends reports from time to time to the board, and that is how he is evaluated because the reports include evidence of him completing those tasks that have been given to him by the board. This is a really interesting way of running a board. Not every board of education uses this method, but ours does, and it seems to be working well. In order to do this, it does require a lot of collaboration among board members and also quite an amount of trust in the superintendent since he is the one that writes the reports, they're self-written on what he has accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Sydney? Sydney, are you on mute?
This is a great question. So, the, the school board is really the body that's setting the vision for the district and laying out what we think the end goals are for our students and, and how, what the experience we want in our, in our school system. The school board is the voice of the community into that process. So, a deep part of our role is in listening to the community and our constituents and understanding what the values are, the needs and interests are of that community as we go to set that vision and then the policies that we govern the school board by. The superintendent has a very different role. That role is to oversee the operations of the school district to ensure the staffing, the financials. And then when we come back together, it's really about performance. So, the board plays an ongoing and constant role of reviewing performance, of bringing in insights from the community, of asking the questions that need to be asked to ensure that we're making progress toward that vision, and if we need to deviate in any way that we know how and why that's going to happen, and continue to measure that success.
Thank you. Wendy, would you like to have a 30-second rebuttal? Wendy, are you on mute?
Sorry about that. So, as the school board does their job of basically creating through their vision of what they would like our school district to be and what we would like the ends for the students, what they need to accomplish by the time they graduate, there is evaluation going on throughout. One thing I'd like to improve on is the part about listening to the community, which was just mentioned. I've been to a few board meetings, either in person or by Zoom, and I know that the board does not answer when people address the board directly during meetings. And I'm not sure if they ever do get answered, and I would like to find that out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next round is Robin, followed by Marnie, and then the rebuttal by Robin again. So, Robin, would you like to proceed?
Sorry, I was talking to mute there for a minute. Yeah, I see the superintendent as running the, the operations of the district and also, as you say, providing the, the reports and so the school board can evaluate his performance. And I do agree that we need to reflect the needs of the community. And so I think it's good to kind of maybe communicate to the community that we are open for their input, that we want to consider that because I think sometimes there's like kind of the division there. And as long as we try to encourage more input from the community, that would be also very helpful, I think. Because, like I say, they're the ones that elect us, they're the ones that, you know, pay the money for the school, and their taxes pay the money. So, they should have a fairly good amount of input and make sure that they understand that we're open to getting their input. And also, I think from time to time, it would be nice to have the students come in and say how they think things are doing too.
Thank you. Marnie?
Yes, so your question about the superintendent and his role, and I'll use the gender pronoun he because that relates to our current superintendent. His role is to be the operational leader and the educational leader. So, while the board sets policies and an overall goal for the, the, for the district, which in policy governance we call those ends, he's in charge of the means. But of course, we all know that the ends doesn't justify the means. So, there are executive limitations that the board places, saying that the superintendent shall not fail to do certain things. And it ranges all the way from our budget, educational programs, different things around the budget. So, that the board sets those goals, but it's really up to that superintendent. What I appreciate about policy governance is that it creates a very fine delineated line between the role of the superintendent and the role of the board. Because when they start doing each other's job, you do not have a cohesive district, and the district will not move in a positive move way forward. And so I think that's one of the strengths of policy governance. I serve on another board right now that I won't mention that is a disaster. And right now, I'm in the process doing all of my advocacy to try to get it to move to policy governance, which is also very good for nonprofit organizations. So, I'm a true believer in that. I think that we have worked well as a board with our superintendent. It has been a very strong relationship because those roles are defined. And if we step over the line, our superintendent will feel, feel committed to the policy and be able to reflect that and say, here's our policy, and here's the line. I will do my job, you do yours, and you can evaluate whether or not I'm doing the job that I need to be. And that's the role of the board. The reports are available online. I think it gives a profound oversight to the community as to what's going on to the district that you will not find in other school districts that just look at the policy and update policy. There's no monitoring of their policy. Are they living by that? And under policy governance, you find that, that oversight, and it's available to the public.
Thank you very, very much, Marnie. Robin, would you like to make some more comments for 30 seconds?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I ran out of time. One of the things that I think is important is to look at the reports, and are they measuring the right thing? Sometimes those need to be revised from time to time. And so I think it's worth looking. Are we measuring the real goal? Are we, are we just kind of putting some fuzzy data out there? So, you know, it does help to review the reports from time to time and see how they're, how they're constructed and what they're measuring. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question is regarding the budget. All parents want the best education possible for their children in allocating district resources. What would you consider when balancing equity with equality? This round, Sydney starts, followed by Wendy, and Sydney has a 30-second rebuttal. The second round will be Marnie, Robin, and then Marnie again. Sydney, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, I, I think it's a really important question. It's a great follow-up to the question about setting up the vision for the district or the, or the, and the ends for our student because the budget really should and does follow that vision. It's really important that we're using the budget as an expression of our values and putting the, the dollars in our system, which comes from various sources for various reasons and in a great deal of categories into those programs that we believe really will drive those ends, ends for our student. So, I think it's, it's critical that as a board, which we do, is that we set out the parameters by which the budget should be developed. We, that includes two different categories, but also to how much we need to keep in reserve to make sure we're maintaining a strong fiscal management of our, of our dollars. Then the question is, as we go through time, how are we allocating specifically? And to your point about equity and equality, it's really important that part of that monitoring that we just talked about is to understand how our students are performing in the schools, what the need is in different buildings, and that we look at how we allocate budget in order to fit the needs of those, the different buildings. So, where we want to ensure that we're providing services for the broad gamut, high, high achieving, high-performing programs, support services, facilities that we're allocating to each of those buildings and entities in the, in the way in which best supports the need in that building. So, those two questions are actually really well-tied and super important as we live out the values of the board that we ensure that we're investing in a way that ensures those dollars are aligned to those goals and in support of the building's specific needs.
Thank you very much. Wendy? Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
All parents want the best education possible for their children. In allocating district resources, what would you consider when balancing equity with equality?
Okay, so the budget takes a lot of deliberation and consideration to be sure that it is being spent to fulfill the needs of all the students. It takes a lot of time and analyzing to figure it out because you only have so much money, and you want to make sure that every dollar is spent in the best way to affect a positive change and improvement for all of our kids. I would say that every school right now has students that are substantially behind the rest of the students in their class due to COVID and the long-distance learning that they had to do, and many students suffered because of this. A lot of students are already behind, and teaching all students in a classroom at grade level and then deciding to test them is not really good for the students. We need to identify the ones that need help now and put the money into it so that those kids don't continually feel frustrated. That would be one way that I would spend money now from the budget to really help those kids. Another way is that we have a lot of deficiency as far as having enough teachers, staffing, special education, and those students need our help the most, and they should not be forgotten.
Thank you very much. Sydney, would you like to have 30 seconds?
Yeah, that'd be great. Again, I'll just reemphasize my initial point is that budget is an expression of, of values. And we work very hard and will continue to ensure that we're aligning the budget of the district to the need in the district. That includes many different services, support services, our staffing. All of that is included in the budget. And a really important position of the board is to ensure that we are aware of where those funds are going and monitoring that on an ongoing basis.
Thank you very much. The next question regard, is regarding mental health. Oh, I'm sorry, Marnie. Marnie's on a chance of this, right?
Right, so Robin and I still have our chances.
I'm sorry. Marnie, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got it, and I do appreciate so. The budget is our mechanism, as Sydney said, to really represent our values. But what's important is your question is about equality versus equity, right? So, whether or not we're spending things equally, or are we spending them equitably? Now, there are, there are times where we are doing equal, equal pay. So, what we're doing with salaries, there's a salary schedule. Teachers get their salary pay, or a food service worker gets their salary paid on the, based on those schedules, which is equal kind of equal pay. You, you can balance that out throughout the buildings or throughout those roles. They're all receiving that same amount of pay. But equity is looking at where do we need to focus resources to get outcomes where we need them? Some schools or some buildings in our, in our system, some students in our system may require more resources in order to be able to access the same level of education. So, if we're talking about a need for remediation, that might mean transportation for summer school. If we're talking about maybe additional English language services, that might mean an opportunity to be pulled out where it's not going to impact their learning in the classroom. Might require more teachers in certain buildings to be able to meet the needs of those students. So, there's a variety of what is considered equal and versus equitable and how you want to focus that funding and how you want to focus your budget.
Thank you, Marnie. Robin? Robin, would you?
Yeah, sorry. It's hard to get the mute off.
It is hard. It is hard.
But, yeah, I, I think that like we're coming into the school year with a lot of people in, the students in the school having maybe some shortfalls in their learning due to, you know, working on Zoom or, and you know, not being able to keep up or getting behind. And there's not really an efficient way for them to communicate that, not in person. So, I think obviously we're going to have limitations to budget and resources. And I think, and I do agree that we do need to have some kind of evaluation at the beginning of school to see where everybody's kind of falls out. But another thing that I think would be very helpful in conserving limited budget, limited resources is if you have several students who need extra work or extra attention from a specialized teacher or something, it would be good if they could group them together. Because if they're having struggles, they, they don't feel so kind of bad because they have other people in there that are having the same problems as them, and it makes them feel better and maybe gets them more motivated to, because they can encourage each other. So.
Thank you.
Didn't have enough time.
Marnie, Marnie, would you have, would you like another 30 seconds?
Yes, first of all, I want to say I cannot hear the bell, so if there's a timer, I haven't been hearing that. So, I apologize if I've been taking overtime. I just finally wanted to say that in the next year, we're going to have several issues related to the budget. We were relatively underfunded when it came to COVID recovery from the federal government. Most districts got well over $1,000, maybe $1,500 per student, while the Isiqua School District got $351 per student. So, we're going to have a gap in our ability to spend on that, and that's work that continues to need to be done and is very important.
Thank you very much. The next question relates to mental health. How do you plan to support students in dealing with the mental health challenges that have been exacerbated by the pandemic, remote school, and transition back to in-person learning? The first round, Robin has a first say, followed by Marnie, and then followed by Robin again for rebuttal. Robin?
Yes, I think that this is going to be really, really important in the coming school year because when children are isolated, and I saw it in my own neighborhood, it was really sad. I mean, they, they didn't have friends to talk to, they didn't have friends to interact with. And it, it made them very sad. I, I do, it just was very sad. And I think that, like I said, I brought up the recess thing. The children interact a lot socially at recess. So, and the thing is, they're going to be under a lot of pressure to catch up anyway. So, they need that break to just get out in the fresh air and recharge. And also, And um also, um, if there are, you know, students who seem to have uh. You know, again, we need, we need, you know, w- we do need the counseling resources. Because some of these students will come back and they're going to have real emotional issues. And you you know, you're going to have to keep an eye out for where the counselors can become involved. And um, maybe uh just have something at the beginning of school to like a friendship day. Where they could um start to get to know people and and talk about, you know, being kind and understanding with each other after this hard time. You know, I I don't know if they could work that out, but it would be nice to have a friendship rally, you know, at the beginning of school.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Robin. Marnie? Um, what do you plan to, how do you plan to support students in dealing with the mental health challenges that they've been facing this year?
And this is a great question. Um, I watched with my own student as she struggled through this past year in the pandemic and remote learning. But I will say that this has been an issue for years. Uh, you can look back at our healthy youth uh survey data. It's available on our website. Um, we've been looking at this. We've been having uh students take these surveys and tell us how they feel. I did a presentation at my church probably about five years ago. And at that time, twenty percent of our students were dealing with, excuse me, thirty percent of our students were dealing with depression. And twenty percent were dealing with ideation of suicide. It's highly been an issue, which is why in the Issaquah School District, uh, for several years now, we've had mental health counselors. That have been contracted through Swedish uh uh Medical Center uh in our school buildings in our high school. That has expanded with the passage of the last levy. So thank you to our community for the levy. It's been vitally important um to be able to provide that down to the middle schools and even some of our elementary schools. So we've expanded our counselor help. The other is looking at our um our other uh organizations around the community, our community organizations such as the garage. Or Influence the Choice, for which I serve as president of the Board of Directors for Influence the Choice. They're looking at how mental health is impacting students, providing leadership opportunities for them, providing their voice in being able to support one another. So I think those are all vital programs working together for the mental health of our students.
Thank you. Uh, Robin, would you like another thirty seconds?
Um, yes. Oh, sorry. Hello. No, there's, is it working? No. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. So it was like it wasn't working or something. Um, I think that again, uh, we need to. A lot of times, some of the best mental health things can be students helping other students. And you know, if we had programs where people could be buddies or, you know, and also maybe break up a little bit of the the. The gangy sort of activity too, but it just. Everybody is responsible. If some, if you see somebody who looks sad and you're worried, you don't have to bug them, but you could just maybe talk to a counselor and say. You know, he's been acting sort of sad or withdrawn, you know, maybe you can get, talk to him, you know?
Thank you, Robin. Thank you very much. Okay, the next round will be Wendy uh followed by Sydney and then Wendy for the last thirty seconds. Wendy, um, how do you plan to support students in dealing with the mental health challenges? That have been exacerbated by the pandemic, remote school and the transition back to in-person learning? Wendy?
Yes, can you see me and hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, so we're talking about students' mental and emotional health and it is, it is definitely a problem. Um, do we notice that a lot of the students are depressed because they know they are not keeping up with their peers? In the time it takes the school to identify students that are behind, those students will fall even further behind and feel even more frustrated and depressed. We must implement vibrant, engaging remedial education for those students as soon as possible. Another thing is that in the school, it within the school, the teacher is the first person that will notice usually what is going on. And if there is a problem with a student. Um. The teacher must have a lot of engagement, be almost like a cheerleader for her students. Um, encourage them with everything that they do know that. Let them know how much the teacher cares for their students because they do know and they will know. And you build that trust with them and a lot of times students will eventually share things that they're having problems with. And then it's up to the teacher to help that student as much as he or she can. And then refer them for counseling so that they can get um professional help.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Sydney?
Yes, uh, you know, this is a super important question and it's certainly um and unfortunately not a new question. We we have for many years been aware of rising anxiety, rising suicidal ideation, as Marnie mentioned. In in our youth population, um, rising issues with behavioral health in in general. And um, you know, it's a a challenge that we've had to had to look at and be really considerate of. And even with the budget challenges that we've had as a district, to ensure that as much as possible that we can. Uh, keep in place the support structures that we have. I think one of the key support structures that we do have that is working today is called um uh multi-tiered systems of support. So today in our schools, we do have teams within our buildings who are working to assess, identify um challenges happening with with our students. To determine um what are the best course of action next, whether that be academic, whether that be um behavioral health related, mental health related. And determine what is the next best step and the next best referral. It is critical at this time that we have these kind of systems in place and that they're operating. And I'm certainly committed to making sure that where we um have them, we keep them and where we can expand them, we do that as well.
Thank you very much. Wendy, would you like another thirty seconds? Twenty seconds.
Okay, well, teachers um should be, should know and be aware of just things that are telltale signs. Uh, as a classroom teacher, you notice if a student is absent frequently, that's a good sign that there may be something going on. And also the silent student that doesn't want to be seen, they they I call them the invisible student. And those are students you really want to get into communication with and see how you can help.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next question uh is another equity question. What impedes equity and inclusion in our schools? First, Marnie, uh, then Robin, and then Marnie again. Marnie?
Yes, we we've been hearing from our uh students um uh much about what's what's kind of impeding their feeling included. Um, especially our students of color, our students that might be LGBT uh Q in that in that community. And identify that way, that there's not an understanding of who they are. And so that creates a barrier. And and fortunately, uh, the district has been working to help um our teachers to be better qualified to address the needs of students. Uh, we've been looking at ways to um look at literature so that it becomes um even more welcoming for uh our our kids. Through a spectrum of uh experiences at home. Uh, we look at ways of understanding that our community is changing and what are the uh cultural norms for a variety of cultures that might not be our own. So there is a variety of ways that we can be looking at helping support students that are not feeling in- included. Um, and may feel like they're not being appreciated for who they are at the core of their being. I think that's important for uh each student to feel that the adults in the building believe in them. And uh, look to see that they're going to grow and and actually can reach their full potential.
Thank you very much, Marnie. Robin, would you let me to uh repeat the question?
Uh, yes, please, I.
Okay, sure. What what impedes equity and inclusion in our schools?
Okay, um, one of the things I think that might impede equity in the schools is where you have people that are not performing as well. And nobody's really looking at helping them. And so uh, to keep them more engaged and feeling like they're doing well. Um, that's part of it, you know, keeping their educational standards up to to snuff. And also, um, I think. If they have a a program of good communication. Because a lot of times things feel, people feel bad or they feel like they're not included is because uh they don't have good communication skills. And everybody should improve those. It it's it's really obvious that a lot of times it's it's just a simple misunderstanding or a breakdown of communication. And so even spoken communication skills should be uh a part of their their teaching or their education. Both written and and uh. And but speaking communication skills and also um, again, there should be an emphasis on courtesy, respect. And appreciation of each other and kindness. Um, we just aren't kind enough anymore to other people, so.
Thank you very much, Robin. Marnie, would you like another thirty seconds?
I think another area of um where there's barriers to really feeling included is for students with um special educational needs. Or maybe um physical disabilities. And um, they all, you know, they can often feel not included. And one of the things that we're working towards is creating um a school environment in which students that are on a com-. Uh, that have accommodations can be in the same classroom as students who I don't have accommodations and feel a part of the the community.
Thank you very much. Um. Let's see, uh, this one would be Sydney. Would you let me to repeat the question? What impedes equity and inclusion in our schools?
Thank you. You know, I I I think it's really a multifaceted question. There is no single or 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 simple answer. I think we have, we have been on a journey to build a more inclusive environment. We'll continue on that journey. But there's, you know, there's real um work that needs to be done in a couple of categories that come to mind for me. One is absolutely an educational one for our staff, for our teachers, for our board. To make sure that we're consistently going through professional development and or understanding. Um, and and developing empathetic skills around other cultures, around um norms about how behaviors may be perceived by others as exclusionary. I think there's real operational concerns. I think if, you know, we really listen in, as we have been doing for the last couple of years, to our students or and and our staff and our families. You know, there's process and procedures that folks will encounter in relationship to the district that can feel very exclusionary. You know, does someone who needs some sort of financial assistance need to declare that multiple times throughout a throughout a school year? That can be quite off putting. And then I think, you know, ultimately, there's there's building empathy as a as a skill that's deeply embedded. Within the culture of the organization of the district and growing that amongst the community.
Thank you. Wendy? What impedes equity and inclusion in our schools?
So one thing I think is really important is that the entire staff of a school needs to work together. And be great examples for the children. Um, from the principal down to the custodian. Every single person should be shown the same respect and courtesy. And if students see that, if they see the teachers treating the staff in the cafeteria with respect and kindness as they're equal. Um, the same with the custodian. Um, if you don't know as a principal, every staff person's name, that's not a good sign. I mean, it should be one family working together, everybody doing their bit to help the children feel safe. And know that, hey, if these guys all include each other, we should do that amongst our friends. Um, a teacher should set the zone of her classroom as a sanctuary. The teacher should not allow bullying, insulting remarks. Um, she should teach here, she should teach respect and kindness among the students. And not tolerate any kind of nasty comments for any reason against any student. That should just be unacceptable in the classroom. Also, teachers should find the best ways to engage the students who aren't participating. There's always a way and that's, that is the key ingredient is to find what method will get those students to participate and feel like they are a part of the group.
Thank you very much. Sydney, would you like another thirty seconds?
I would. You know, I think we have to work very hard to ensure that there is no factor or demographic about our students that presupposes their outcome. And the work we have to continue to do is look for all opportunities where um a a demographic notation is is seen as a correlation to some level of outcome. High performance, low performance or discipline issues, and that's what we have to get after.
Thank you. Uh, the next question um is on COVID. Uh, given state and county requirements, how would you balance safety with access to in-person instruction? Wendy gets the first uh shot at this one, followed by Cindy and then Wendy for rebuttal. Wendy?
Yes. So. The schools have to do an excellent job of sanitation. It's my understanding that that is the most important ingredient in keeping the COVID germ from even getting into the schools. If you have everything in your classroom and every area of the school sanitized, good ventilation. Remind the kids over and over again to wash their hands thoroughly every time they need to wash their hands. That can make a huge difference. Um. Having the students uh when they're in close contact, wear masks and making sure that um. You know, that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and not um. Being in close contact without their masks or with hands that haven't been washed. I think that will help keep the students safe. And when they're outdoors and safely distanced, I believe they should be allowed to take off their masks. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Sydney? Um, how would you balance safety with access to in-person instruction?
Yeah, I I mean, this is something that we've worked over across the entire eighteen months. The, as you bring up, regulations from different entities, we've had to move as those have moved. Um, as we've gotten different direction and the reality is, is that you you don't build up that muscle overnight. We brought back in small groups, increasingly larger groups of students back into the buildings last last school year. And that was in order to make sure we had protocols in place to ensure we had working processes, that we had multi-layers of COVID protection in place. Vaccinations, masking, ventilation, social distancing distancing where possible. Um, cleaning within the buildings for sure and this year adding and testing. And so we make sure that we move methodically, have well documented processes, well-staffed team to execute on those processes. And stay in close contact both as a board and as a district with each of those agencies to ensure that we're staying on top of the most current and recent information. And we have our kids back in school and we've been doing really well. And and we're going to stay focused on making sure those protocols stay in place and are well executed.
Thank you very much. Wendy, would you like another thirty seconds on this?
Yes. So I agree with everything that has been said, um cleanliness, spacing. Um, all of those things are important and I know that we've been given directions through the CDC and and the Health Department. Um, one of the things that I've heard from a couple of parents is that one parent had her child, an elementary school student, quarantined because she did test positive. And the t- the parent has been trying to get the homework assignments for her child. And she was told she won't get any homework assignments. She'll just get all the work that she missed when she comes back to school. So that is one um part of whatever is going on with instructions for handling COVID. That is very frustrating because these kids have already lost so much time and so much learning. I don't believe that we should add to it by simp, I mean, the teacher just has to send an email with the homework. It would seem like that would be a pretty easy thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next question is on school board meetings. This has been in the news lately, of course. The school board member's job is to bring the perspectives and needs of the community to the education institution.
Tony, I think you missed uh, yeah.
Miss Robin? Missed Robin? Oh, we did, didn't we? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Robin! Given the state and county requirements, how would you balance safety with access to in-person instruction?
Well, like, as I mentioned before once, I said, you know, they always say follow the science and I, and I, you know, I have a background in bi, um, biology, and I, and I always roll my eyes and say, oh, I wish they would. Because I think they've locked it down too hard for children. First of all, children are very low affected by, there, there's very little incidence of COVID among children. They have been mercifully blessed with uh, not being too susceptible to it. Um, in fact, I can think of uh, flu or colds that have actually had morally fallacy on students and nobody ever wore masks back then. I do think um, that the most important thing is, as far as what the NIH said um, very early on about the COVID, was that the surface-to-surface transfer was gonna be the most dangerous. There, there's, there's very little air transfer of the virus. And so I think the sanitation is gonna be a key element in preventing COVID in the, the schools. Washing hands and also making sure there's hand sanitizer available at the doors and um, and at various key locations where the children are coming, like, from the cafeteria or whatever. Um, that's really important. Um, I would like to see them fight back hard about masks because masks do not work. They do not work. They, and they impede the child's education because you can't see the face, you can't read the facial expressions. I understand if the teacher is nervous about it, they might have to wear a mask or take extra precautions, but the children themselves are not that heavily affected by COVID. And not only that, but the RSV, what, the bacteria that builds up on the inside of the mask has caused a lot of incidents of RSV infections uh, in the children, which is actually kind of bad. So if there's any way we can get an exception to the, some of the, the mask mandate because it, it doesn't work.
Thank you.
Not for kids. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Marn, Marnie?
I, yes, I think the, the layered mitigation uh, of all of the things I think Sydney had mentioned them are really what's important uh, when looking at um, supporting students being in the classroom. That is our number one priority, is to stay uh, in school as much as possible, that each student can stay in school as much as possible. Um, and so that's why you want those layered mitigations, much like Swiss cheese. No single mitigation is perfect. Uh, each of them have their holes, but when you add and layer them on, uh, that's, that's really where the strength comes from. So COVID is definitely a safety issue, but all to safety of our students, um, and our staff members are vitally important for us. Uh, and that is why we make uh, changes to our buildings to ensure that they are safer, uh, more restricted access, so that we know who's coming inside. Uh, that we provide mental health counselors and make them available so that students can feel safe from um, the anxiety and the depression that they're feeling, safe from themselves. So those are definitely the mitigations that we're putting in place related to COVID. We'll take the direction of the Department of Health. I've been serving on um, uh, with a group of board members in East King County. We've had contact with uh, Public Health of King County and Seattle, King County, uh, on a monthly basis to ensure that we're, we have the latest uh, the latest information, that we can tell them areas where operationally we've been struggling, what we need from them or their advocacy with the Department of Health. So there's, there's many things that we can be and we are doing to promote this, uh, the safety of our students and our staff so that we can keep our schools open and in person.
Thank you, Marnie. Robin, would you like another thirty seconds?
Well, I don't know if I agree with the uh, Swiss cheese. Uh, I mean, that's like, what, wear three masks? You know, I, I don't know. That's, I don't know if I agree with that. That's like try, trying to stop a mosquito from going through three chain link fences as opposed to one. Uh, definitely surface transmission is the biggest concern, and uh, I would put most emphasis on that, but the masks actually are a health hazard to children, and uh, they need.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, gosh, we've got a couple more questions I'd love to ask, but we're running out of time. So, and now is a time for uh, each of the candidates to uh, have a one-minute closing remark, uh, remarks, remarks. Um, we'll reverse the order from the opening statements. Sydney will start, followed by Wendy, Marnie, and Robin. Sydney? You have a one-minute response, one-minute summary.
Uh, again, I'd like to thank you for having me uh, today. It's been a fantastic session. I hope that I've given you a good understanding of who I am and why the work and continued forward progress of the Issaquah School Board is so important to me. I'm optimistic about how we'll move forward as a community and how we'll continue to adapt, change, and grow. I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wendy?
Thank you to our gracious hosts. The school board plays a critical role in determining the policy that will improve the education of all our children. We are fortunate, our community considers education to be paramount. If elected to the Issaquah School Board, I will ask in-depth questions about policy and programs to understand the value they will bring to the classroom. I will listen to the concerns of our community and work collaboratively with fellow board members to improve our schools. I am the only candidate with teaching and educational leadership experience. I will not allow the quality of education offered in our schools to be diminished. My top priority will always be the continuous improvement in the quality of teaching and learning in every classroom for every child. It would be an honor for me to serve on the Issaquah School Board. I ask for your vote on November second. Dr. Wendy Giora for Issaquah School Board.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Marnie?
It's been, been my pleasure serving this wonderful community over the past twelve years. My experience as a school board director will be vital during the next several years as we recover from the impact of COVID on our education system. We will need to focus on the needs of our students, our staff, and our community, and work together so that each student can reach their full potential. The district will not only be impacted by the decisions made locally by our board, but also by state and federal mandates and laws. I have built strong relationships with our state legislators and have engaged our federal congressional members each year that I've been on the board. Over the past year, I participated in a group of Eastside School Directors as we, as we've met with the staff from Public Health of Seattle, King County, from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Construction, as well as county, state, and federal legislators and staff as we work towards recovery. I hope you valued my work on the Issaquah School Board and ask that you please vote for my reelection on November second.
Thank you, Marnie. Robin? Robin?
Yeah, there you go. Um, I am very excited about the upcoming school year. I would like to make a great contribution there. And um, I think that if we meet the challenges of returning to school after COVID with cooperation, teamwork, and a reaching out to the community to get their buy-in, I think that we will have a very successful school year.
Thank you very much. And I'm turning it back to Ann.
Thank you, candidates, for participating in this event. Your willing to serve is much appreciated. The Issaquah Cable TV Commission has recorded tonight's forum and will post it on YouTube. You can find the video by searching for the channel of the city of Issaquah. We'd like to thank everyone who watched this event live, and we ask you all to please tell your friends so that they can watch at their convenience and become themselves more informed voters by November second. Good night, everyone.